Good evening and welcome to the Carnegie Town Hall. The regular meeting of the City Planning Commission will be called to order and we'll begin with a few introductory remarks. The City of Sioux Falls Planning Commission serves as advisory board to the city council. It is a responsibility of the Planning Commission to consider and make recommendation on land use and zoning matters. Conditional use permits and minor amendment requests will have final action here this evening unless appealed to the city council in writing within five days. Any decision made on preliminary subdivision plans or future land use amendment requests tonight will be referred to the city council for final action at the third council meeting of the month. Any decision made on rezoning requests, major amendments, or ordinance amendments tonight will be referred to the city council for final action at the first council meeting of the month. Council meetings are held at 7:00 PM here in the Carnegie Town Hall and are televised. Any action taken here tonight on a final development plan is final. The Planning Commission will first approve the consent agenda and then the regular agenda. In order to place certain non-controversial items on the commission's consent agenda, planning staff and the Planning Commission applies the following criteria. First, the request conforms with the City 2015 Land Use Plan. Second, the planning staff recommends approval of the request. And third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request. And fourth, the application meets all conditions and requirements of the ordinance. Once the consent agenda items are approved, you are free to leave. For the regular agenda, the following normal public hearing procedure will be followed. By first requesting planning staff to present a brief report on each item. Second, the petitioner will be requested to come forward and make a statement or answer questions. After the petitioner, anyone from the audience who wishes to address a particular agenda item shall be recognized. Then, the Planning Commission will discuss the matter further and take appropriate action. We ask that anyone addressing the Planning Commission other than staff move to the podium microphone, identify themselves, and state their address for the record. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we ask you please either turn off or silence your cellphone and page your. This meeting is being televised on Channel 16 and will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 AM, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, and Wednesday at 1:00 AM. Thank you for your cooperation.
Okay. Don't tap. Tony doesn't like when we tap. So...
Hello?
Well, I'll just have to talk really loud.
I'll go back downstairs and have Tony check the audio. But he thought that once the video stopped, that the audio would come back on. So that's why I'm just standing here talking while you all respond and see if your audio's working. But at least we don't have a big crowd to...
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead and start with the consent agenda.
Okay. I will... Please bear with us. I'll try to talk really loud, which my husband would say isn't hard for me to do. Okay. Number one on the consent agenda, approval of November 4th, 2009, meetings of the minutes of the regular meeting. Number two is Platts. Number three, 2009-06-02, conditional use permit in the RA1 residential district to allow off-site parking within 300 feet of the primary use at 619 South Phillips. Number four, 2009-10-15, special use permit in SubArea A of the Meadows on the River Plan Development District to allow an on-sale alcohol establishment at 2501 South Shirley. Number five, 2009-11-01, conditional use permit in the I1 Light Industrial District to allow trade... Excuse me. Allow retail trade and service at 1321 North Cleveland Avenue. Number six, 2009-11-04, conditional use permit in the C2 General Commercial District to allow a church at 2707 South Carolyn Avenue, Suites 1A and 2A. Number seven, 2009-11-05, minor amendment to SubArea C of the Whisper Ridge Plan Development District to allow required front yard setback reduction from 20 feet to 12 feet and to allow required rear yard setback reductions from 25 feet to zero feet on 8plex and 6plex buildings at Southeastern Avenue and Whisper Trail. And that is the consent agenda. Now I need a motion to approve the consent agenda? Oh, yes. Does anybody in the audience want to move anything from the consent agenda to the regular If not, do I have a motion to approve the regular agenda? Or, excuse me, the consent agenda?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'll move for approval of the consent agenda.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda has been approved. Now we'll move to the regular agenda. Number eight, 2009-11-06, a minor amendment in SubArea D of the Meadows on the River Plan Development District to allow a 20-square-foot increase to the existing freestanding sign at 2520 South Louise.
Madam Chair, my name is Steve Randall, representing planning staff on this item. And we have received a request from the applicant to defer this item. And so that is staff's recommendation.
That number eight is deferred. Did you want to include number nine with that also?
Yes. We've also received a request from the applicant to defer item number nine.
Okay. Eight and nine have been deferred. So we will move on to number 10. 2009-11-02, Final Development Plan and Design Review in the 49th Street Design Review District, SubArea A of the Valhalla Plan Development District to construct a telecommunication tower at 4100 West Valhalla Boulevard. Staff report?
This application comes to you as a final development plan as a result of a major amendment that was recently approved by the Planning Commission and the city council to allow a telecommunications tower in the SubArea of Valhalla PD. Kurt Walter is the agent for Verizon Wireless, is the applicant, and the owner being Midwest Residential Fund and Hubbell Realty Company. We have a representative of that organization here this evening to answer any questions that you might have. The purpose is to construct a telecommunications tower 75 feet high. The criteria for evaluating the application are included in your staff report and are also in the SubArea regulations recently approved by this body and by the city council. The neighboring uses are indicated as C4 Commercial to the north, and to the south and to the east, we're in the Valhalla PD with multifamily residential and office uses. And to the west, it's RA1 Residential in a regional stormwater detention area. The PD was owned in 1984 for development of apartments and business technology uses, and a major amendment was approved in November 2009 to allow the tower in SubArea A. For the major amendment applicant to use the... To allow the use, staff recommended that the applicant consider the following plan improvements for a final development plan application. First one being that the equipment, shelter, and screen fence materials and colors to be similar to adjacent residential structures, and a solid fence is necessary for visual screening. This was provided, if you look at the final development plan, by the applicant. Second, the tower should have minimal flooding of the surface and have a light neutral color. This was also provided by the applicant. And third, that additional landscaping at the base of the tower and facility perimeter is needed to buffer views to the tower from West 49th Street looking up from passing traffic and from adjacent residential structures looking out and down from upper floors of an apartment building. That landscaping plan is currently in the works, and the applicant and the apartment management, owners of the apartments, have been in discussions. Plans are being put together. We have not received any plans to look at other than an indication that the 49th Street Design Review District requirements for landscaping are being met on the property. That leaves the application actually is complete except for that item as far as staff is concerned. And staff is recommending approval subject to a landscaping plan being presented, accepted by the apartment management and the planning director. If that is acceptable to you, that would be the only condition that we recommend for approval, and that concludes staff report.
Any questions of Steve?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Steve, is this a flagpole?
It is not a flagpole. It is a monopole, but it is stealth designed in that all antenna and devices are concealed within the monopole. It looks like a flagpole without a flag.
Any other questions of Steve? Thank you. Is the applicant present?
My name is Brian Majerus, 811 North Fairfax. I'm the property manager for Penbrook Place Apartments at 4100 West Valhalla.
I'm sorry. What was your name, sir?
Brian Majerus.
Okay. Any questions of Brian? Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone in the audience wishing to address this item? Okay. If not, I will call for commission action.
Madam Chair, I'd make the motion to recommend approval of the final development plan with a single stipulation.
I'll second. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Number 10 passes. Number 11. I hear you have a little slideshow for us.
Yes, I do. Jeff Schmidt, representing planning staff on this item. Since we had a shorter agenda this evening and we have a packed audience, we figured we'd give Planning Commission the opportunity to go through a zoning update. And I'm just going to take some time to... Basically, this is an informational item, nothing to be voted on, and we were just going to give some information on where we're going with the planning... The comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance. If you have any questions at any time, please let me know on those, and then we'll just kind of do a briefing from this standpoint. Again, where we're at right now is we are... The comprehensive plan for the City of Sioux Falls, Shape Sioux Falls 2035, has gone through the Planning Commission. We approved that last month, and it will go to city council on Monday evening. The comprehensive plan itself is within state law, referenced in a couple different sections in regards to also the zoning ordinance. In Section 1143, zoning regulations shall be made in accordance with the comprehensive plan. And in 1161, zoning ordinance, any ordinance adopted by the municipality to implement the comprehensive plan by regulating the location and use of buildings and use of land. And the subdivision ordinance, any ordinance adopted by the municipality to regulate the subdivision of the land so as to provide coordination of streets and other subdivisions shall conform with the comprehensive plan. Again, our intent all along for the last couple of years is really to try to update zoning ordinance. I think Planning Commission, you understand that having a zoning ordinance in 1982, we needed to update that. We want to get good public involvement on that. But we couldn't just jump into a zoning ordinance without, as this says, having it coordinated and in accordance with the comprehensive plan. And since our comprehensive plan was getting close to being updated or needed to be updated, we have to go through these steps. The goals and objectives from the comprehensive plan, we have the three goals and objectives. The zoning amendment, what we want again is just to reference, to be consistent with the policies of the comprehensive plan. And really honestly, Chapter 5 of Shape Sioux Falls. This is what... It's 2009 now, so in 2008, we spent all of 2008 to update what at that time we were really calling Shape Sioux Falls and looking at what land development policies were for the City of Sioux Falls. That chapter in itself went through an approval process of Planning Commission and city council. And so that's really what the update for the zoning ordinance is going to be. As we look at a quick snapshot of what we think our development is going to be, is you do a land use map review, then you'd go to zoning districts, and then at that point you'd create places or planned unit of development on the bottom there and start creating some standards. This is what our land use map looks at this point, what it kind of generates the images for. So if you have questions on that as we kind of work through this, we can always come back to the land use map. As we go from land uses and start moving into zoning districts, it references that we're going to have core and support districts. And some of the core and support districts that we currently do not have, that we're going to have to address as we go to do a zoning update, are business parks, mixed uses, horizontal and vertical mixed uses, commercial districts, suburban, single-family, and core single-family. We do have some of these right now, and they're referenced, but they're maybe called in different classifications. I mean, the suburban or the core single-family may be RS1 or RS2, but really what do they look like? The suburban single-family is that area outside of the Beltway, outside of the interstate, where it's more cul-de-sac areas. And what setbacks do you have out there? What lot sizes? Versus obviously, what do you currently have within the core area? And we've never really addressed the differences between those two. On a 46-foot lot frontage in the core, should you have different densities and setbacks versus just saying everything's RS2? You have to have 25-foot front yard setbacks, 5-foot side yards? And whether or not you're in the core or in suburbia, you have to have the same densities and same setbacks. But we're thinking maybe we should look at it a little bit differently. Same thing with business parks and commercial districts. That's where this is spelled out. Again, in the Shape Sioux Falls, it explains what the land uses are, and on the right-hand side, it explains if you're in a regional or subregional area, these are the core districts we'd like to see, and these are the supporting districts we'd like to see. So that would be something that we'd start looking at as we kind of start transitioning into this. It's going to be a learning curve, but the developers would come in and say, okay, I'm in a neighborhood center. So if you're in a neighborhood center, on the right-hand side, you wouldn't be Commercial 3 or 4, but you'd be Commercial 1 or 2, and maybe general office or business park. So that's kind of the process that we'd look to go through. And that would just proceed on any of these land uses. Shape Sioux Falls in Chapter 4, the Shape Transitions, is really when you start getting into zoning and rezoning amendments. Step one of this zoning process is if you're either in a single zoning district or a multi-zoning district. Currently, single zoning are proposed. Single zoning districts are just as it states. You have one zoning classification for your area. You could also be, as it states there in brackets at the very bottom, we have a lot of these right now where developments come in, they go, well, we're still trying to figure out the market, and we want to have multiple zoning districts. We may be either apartments or office, so they'd rezone them themselves to RA1/0. Or they may be office commercial. They may be an O/C. So that'd be a multiple zoning district. Step one continues where, well, maybe there'd be a mixed-use zoning district. And if they're mixed use, which we currently don't have in our zoning, we'd prefer them to be a planned development district. So mixed use would start to give more standards for what those are. We'd look at what their zoning is. We'd look at it, see if it was consistent with the land use map. And then we'd go really into step two and define what those planned zoning districts are. Planned zoning districts are, are you single-family, medium density, high density? And the classifications that we currently have, we would assume are going to be the new ones too, RS1, RS2, RD. But there may be some name changes. There may be some additions there. But we just wanted, again, let the public understand and know, as well as Planning Commission, that we're looking at single-family or high-density residential districts. Conventional commercial districts versus conventional commercial site design. And how the Shape Sioux Falls currently is working at those four classifications of commercial, it's by size. And you can see up there, Commercial 1 would be a smaller site where the building size would probably be limited to be about 15,000 square feet. Whereas when you get up to the Commercial 3, it'd be a 75,000-square-foot commercial building. So again, reflecting back to the land use map, and it said a neighborhood commercial center would be... A neighborhood commercial center would maybe have Commercial 1 or Commercial 2. You would not expect a big box to be going there because big boxes are 75,000 to 100,000. But could you have a 15,000-square-foot building? Yes. Or 25, we'd start looking at the size of these facilities. We're also going to be having zoning districts for industrial, major institutionals zones, small institutional zones. And again, mixed use is one of the main things that we have to look at into the future. It's not for everybody, but it's something that we have to address. Step three in the zoning section is to create compatibility between these zoning districts. And this is something that I think is really going to be helpful, and you've seen this before, but we haven't always addressed compatibility in your rezoning requests. Someone will come in and say, I want to rezone to RA1, or I want to rezone to C4 Commercial, and we haven't been able to have criteria in whether or not that's appropriate or not. With this new table, you'd be able to say if it's, as the box is showing here, a Commercial 3 and a next to office would be compatible with a 4, so it is compatible. And so you'd be able to see what you're proposing versus what you're next to, to be able to make a determination whether or not it's appropriate or not. And again, then we go through what is compatible with a 5, 4. It's compatible, but there may be some conflicts. We describe what 3 potential incompatibilities are. 2, what medium incompatibilities are. 1, that they're highly incompatible. And then there's a chart that describes all these things. So planning commissioners, developers, property owners would understand, okay, on this far-left-hand side, which I understand it's hard to see on the big screen, but on that far-left-hand side, that's where low density is. So low density to low density, that's a 5. It's highly compatible. However, on the very bottom there, we can see the red. Okay, again, color combinations along with numbers. What about low density next to heavy industrial? It's number 1. It's highly incompatible. It's just not something that we'd ever addressed before, but now it's pretty easy for people to understand and see when they come in and say, I'd like to rezone this to heavy industrial. You could look at the chart and be able to make some decisions. Yes, sir.
Is this... Will this chart be a subjective evaluation? Or is it the rule that will typically be followed and recommended to the planning commission?
That's an excellent question. Would this be a subjective chart or would this be a recommendation to go for? This would be staff's recommendation. Again, there is some ability to address, you know, 3s. Again, staff's gone through this quite a bit, but we would expect, you know, 4s, 3s, and 2s, that there's not... There's some wiggle room, but we basically said you have to be able to address the transitions. And you could, but how are you going to do that? So we would state that, that, look, this is a 2. There's going to be some incompatibility, and staff's going to say, we're not supportive of this. But could the developer come in here and say, you know what? I have incompatibilities, but the way I'm going to address that transition is... And we're going to... Well, how? I mean, we've already stated it. Staff is standing here saying, we're not really in favor of this. And then what's the neighborhood opposition? What have they raised? Versus, you know, when they come in right away and they say, you know what? It's highly incompatible. There's going to be noise issues, sound issues, smells, lights, hours of operation. I just don't even know if they're going to be able to... But maybe they can. Maybe just the way that the site's designed and the contours, and they're able to do that presentation. But again, everybody knows right up front that it's a 1, it's highly incompatible. The applicant, the property owners, the adjacent property owners should understand that, that they're going to have a red flag right when they stand up here. It's not that subjective from our standpoint versus when you stand up here now and they go, I'd like to rezone this. And we're all looking at each other going, what's the criteria that we even base it on? So we're hoping it will clear it up for everybody. Chapter 5. This is the chapter that we went through in 2008 and brought forward for a specific approval. March 2008, we had the survey. April, we had meetings. June through November, we had meetings. And again, May of 2009 was when it was the approval. So it went just over a year of approval process. The categories that we reviewed were streetscapes, signage, multimodal access, open space, parking, transitions, and vertical and horizontal mixed use. These eight issues are really the big eight that we want to make sure that we're addressing in the zoning change. So as I'm trying to get here to the end and present this, the zoning update at least has to start with these eight things as we realize these are the things that we have the most concerns about. So when we look at vertical mixed use areas, we want to allow, in our zoning code, vertical mixed use is an option. And in vertical mixed use developments, can we provide pedestrians stop scale, street orientation, and building details? Examples being, as you see here, and requiring these types of things. Well, what about horizontal mixed use? Again, what the policies state in the comprehensive plan is that we'd like to integrate rather than separate land uses. We'd like to encourage pedestrians, and we'd like to provide incentives for doing this. Now, we've got to move that into the zoning ordinance and have that discussion. There's some of the examples of more of a horizontal. It's not upper level where there's multiple floors. It's more spread out, but you can have multiple land uses. Streetscapes. When we talk streetscapes, we're saying sidewalks in mixed use areas should be designed for outdoor activities. We're saying boulevard whiffs and sidewalks alignments may vary versus right now, they're pretty static. Internal streets shall be included in mixed use developments. Private street planning should be allowed. Speeds on local streets should be limited. Corridors for special design treatments should be identified, and the city should develop a streetscape elements manual to ensure consistent and attractive features. Now, how do we move that to the zoning? That's really what we're going to do over the next couple of years. Examples of streetscape, you can see outdoor uses and landscaping with lighting features. Signage. I was going to say the bane of my existence, I think. The biggest issue we probably have sometimes is because it isn't really becoming a marketing thing, and in today's economy, everybody's trying to address issues through signage. So the first thing starts to address that we need to allow signage master plans to provide flexible signage regulations. We need to look more and more into the master signage plans and have those addressed through Planning Commission versus addressing them on a daily basis and having them changed frequently. We need to permit off-site campus signs, add public directional sign systems, encourage creative sign design, limit commercial signs in mixed use areas to appropriate scaled signs, and limit the size and duration of temporary signs. Again, all those things can be kind of done through a master sign plan for larger areas and even smaller areas if they come in and present that to you on how they have a theme or a direction for how they want to sign their areas.
Anytime you do a plan, either development, this would be a part of... The sign plan would be a part of that?
Currently, it is, but there's no criteria for that. But we'd like to consider that even more. When a planned unit of development or a mixed use development would come in, they wouldn't just fall under, here's your minimum standards for signage of a wall sign and a freestanding sign. But we'd say, look, we need a master sign plan. Are you going to allow temporary signs? Is there going to be banners? Is there going to be portable sign? What is your theme and your consistency throughout this development? Because they understand that, they know it, that they don't want one building to look totally different than the next one down the block. So they have a theme. That's why it's a master plan development. They should have the same thing for signage, and that should be presented to you. Again, we want some flexibility... Again, we want some flexibility for their development, but it should be presented to this body and be somewhat presented and understood. So, the highlights that we had presented in Chapter 5 was to allow that flexibility and provide developers with the option for internal sign systems within their campus. The multimodal aspect is to have complete streets, provide direct pedestrian pathways between areas, provide transit access, and have street connectivities. Again, showing two examples is that there shall be defined complete street network, which means all types of model systems are included, and require, in most situations, that there's convenient parking for bicycles in areas because that's becoming more and more popular. With open space, you should have flexibility, encourage private open space. Flexibility, again, for building setbacks, integrate functional private open space and allow flexibility in landscaping. One of the things, obviously, we do not have in today's standards is flexibility, and it's becoming more and more critical that we need to address that in our zoning ordinance to have that built in. So, we should strongly support allowing smaller private open spaces in developments and allow the flexibility with the depth of required landscaping. For parking, again, flexible parking requirements. I think we overpark, but the zoning ordinance from 1982 requires things. So, should we look at what required parking is? Yes, let's look at that. Encourage off-street parking and improved parking design. Parking highlights, have the flexibility and show that circulation. Transitions, we talked about this a lot in Chapter 4. That's why we, after Chapter 5 got completed, we created Chapter 4. Encourage multifamily buildings to reduce their parent scale, add options for smooth transitions, and encourage contextual design options. Again, these are the two examples. Other items that we have to make sure that we consider as we move forward in zoning is affordable housing, major and minor institutional uses, landscaping, accessory structures, and storage facilities. How we're going to try to do this is we're going to sign a contract with RDG. We're going to review the ordinance, the community input, and the draft. And I have that spelled out in this section right here. We have a signed contract with RDG right now. What we'd like to do is, in Phase 1, hopefully in this last 2009, is have them review the comprehensive plan document in our existing zoning ordinance. As they review that, both of those documents, they can start getting input from planning staff and zoning staff on what are the obstacles? What problems have you had with the zoning ordinance over the last 25 years? We've listed a lot of them, but starting to give them the heads-up on what issues they have. So, they can take that information, start digesting it, and then they come back in 2010 and start to get community input. What we'd like them to do is take their expertise. We don't want an East Coast or West Coast zoning ordinance. We need a Midwest ordinance that's today based upon 2010 standards. Bring us some ideas to the community, find out from the community what their issues and concerns are. Start to take those to meet today's market issues and concerns, get those amendments starting to be addressed, and then probably at the end of the summer, into the fall, complete this Phase 3, where they start to meet with staff, meet with stakeholders, draft, draft, prepare draft ordinances, and give us their legal opinion on how things are going with the zoning ordinance. So, we're looking at a three-phased approach, where we give them some of this feedback. Now, they spend basically the holiday season, the beginning of the year, seeing what's out there, and then come back and talk to the public. We have looked at putting user groups together to do that, which obviously would include Planning Commission. But our biggest issue and concern is hearing from you as planning commissioners and stakeholders that are out there telling us, "These are the things that need to be changed and addressed" so that we're addressing them.
I was going to ask the question about the design overlay districts. How do they get, how are they accommodated in the new zoning ordinance?
How are the design overlay districts accommodated in the new zoning ordinance? At this point, everything's pretty much an open slate. Until I hear from the community or the stakeholders, I'm reserving judgment on them. I mean, there's some things that I think should be more consistent. There's really inconsistencies between the 7, 8, 9, how many do we have overlay districts? Nine overlay districts. I'd like to address that, but I don't have a real good feel from the stakeholders or the properties themselves to say, "We like them, we don't..." I'm reserving that until I hear from more of the community. Kenny's awful quiet, that concerns me.
Because we told him he had to be.
Good job, Jeff.
It was a good job, Jeff.
You know, again, it's just an overview, it's an informational issue. I wanted to make sure that you understood, we are moving into this, we need a lot of feedback. It's going to be a huge ordeal. Change is bad. People are going to come and say, "You know, we liked from 1982, everything's nice and comfortable." But we also hear that things have to change. We hear that every day. We can't continue to live in this static, single-family has to be this lot size and this density. We have to change those things, but soon as we start changing them, there's going to be people that show up and go, "I don't really like 17 feet, let's go with 15 feet." And that's where I'm going to have to rely on planning commissioners to say, "We're going to be okay, we're going to get through this because we're not going to make everybody happy." But there's a lot of people out there that want changes, and then as soon as we start changing it, then they'll say, "Well, that's not really what I was looking for."
You know, I think if, when the negative comments come through your office, I think that people need to be reminded that the zoning ordinances that we're living with now are 27 years old, and there have been a lot of changes.
Yes.
And so, you're right, I mean, people do resist change, but I think if they're reminded of that, they might back off a little bit.
Jeff, I have a question. I know that when this was beginning to be undertaken in 2008, obviously, things were at a very fast pace in your office, and there was a lot of development going on. And since that time, obviously, our agendas sizes have changed. And in working with the consulting group last year, some things they had a good feel for, some things I felt they were not really in touch with, which is understandable because it's hard, I think, to get a feel for a community when you don't live here, based on what you read and see. So, I'm wondering if there is a portion of that that will become more in-house?
Yes.
Because I think you have a better feel for the community versus...
That's really what we want to make sure we address, too. We didn't want to turn the zoning ordinance over to a consultant and say, "Would you please write this for us and give it back to us?" What we want to make sure we do is say, "Can you give us some ideas and examples, Phase 1? Tell us what's out there. We're going to take it back in Phase 2." We take it out to the community and go, "Here's the spectrum of issues. We kind of told them there was landscaping signage in here," and then they come back and they go, "You could do this code, you could do this code, here's all the different things." And then we, as staff and the community, because we're going to have signed contractors, we're going to have landscapers, we're going to have developers looking at going, "That was terrible." And then we massage them and work on them together. Once we get it drafted as a community, then we give it back to the consultant to say, "This is what we think works." And then their legal experts can sit down and go, "Okay, but you can't really have it drafted quite this way because you won't meet the federal regulations or the legal..." So, I don't want them to draft it. I want us to, give us the examples and then make sure that it's still legal in the end. They do the beginning and then the end, and we do all the work in between. However, that's the real issue, is what is that in-between area? Because if, if I only, as I was talking to Dave today, I don't know what all the issues are. You know, maybe we'll just do signage and landscaping. Maybe that, I mean, I think there's more issues than that, but we're going to start with those eight and maybe have 10 or 11 issues, and I think it will quickly spread to other things, but...
I think that's a very good plan, Jeff.
We just, we want to keep it all in-house with our communities, and that's worked with us in the past, going out to the advisory boards and having study groups and working with our planning commissioners. Every time we come up with something, we kind of get someone to sit in on a group and kind of massage these things. We're just going to have to spend a lot more time as a local entity doing them, so...
Well, I think people just have to be patient. I mean, again, we're using something that is 27 years old, and the change is just not going to happen overnight. And any other questions, Jeff?
I have one. I guess, since this is an informational meeting, this is a little bit of a detour. But I've read recently and heard comments recently related to Houston and their lack of zoning ordinances. And I think I understand how Houston managed their building and planning, but for the, I don't know if the best of the planning commission has that background, but could, for all of our benefits, you explain, when the Houston reference is made, how they handle planning and zoning regulations compared to how the rest of the world does it?
I don't know if I'm an expert on Houston either. They always point to Houston as a place that doesn't have zoning, so other communities don't have zoning. The issues are, they do have land uses, they look at land uses, and they do have criteria that they have to address. It's just that they don't necessarily have to separate their land uses and zoning when they get down to certain property rights. Where, again, in Sioux Falls and most communities, you've always had to separate all of your land uses. You had your commercial over here and your industrial here. So, in Houston, you've had the ability to put industrial next to single-family or locally inland land uses right next to single-family. And that's either been supported as a good thing for property owners or a negative thing for citizens.
I actually looked at it a little bit just from recently, just in my education, and what they've done, I think a difference between Houston and Sioux Falls and many other areas of the country is that there's very strong neighborhood associations in Houston that have a lot more authority and power, they're almost quasi-governmental in nature in how they design, and developer will set those up according to certain criteria. And so, they've got, you know, it's almost a more delineated type of regulation in that, in, down in the Houston area. There are some other examples around, too, but Sioux Falls is different in that sense is that we don't have these very strong neighborhood associations.
Don't they also rely heavily on planned unit developments in Houston?
Yeah, yep, they do. And that's part of the whole process of the development, is that, part of it, too, is, I mean, Houston, you know, the city of Houston is 2 million people, and so, they've got massive developments that occur at the exact same time. I mean, they, you know, they can develop 600 acres of land at the, you know, within two or three years, and so, they're able to put the structure in place. You know, a developer, along with looking through the city government process down there, puts that structure in place that allows that kind of neighborhood association to form and start operations then.
What I guess would be important to note, because we're hearing this from time to time, this reference to Houston, is that if you were living in Houston, you have, and you bought a very expensive lot and an expensive development, and it was a greenfield next to you, you might not have the same protections in Houston in terms of what could be built next to you.
Right, and that, yep.
That we have here.
Yep. No, I think that's true, and I think one of the things that, you know, both Jeff and I were just saying is that, is that that's true, and it, but it's also different in just the sense of how large-scale some of their developments are. On the periphery of those developments, you're right, there isn't as much, you know, protection. And, but within the development, that's where those neighborhood associations play a pretty large role.
But it always comes up and has for years and years and years that Houston doesn't have a zoning code. And if you go down there...
But that doesn't equate to lack of land use control.
Right. But I think that's important to note.
Yep.
Yeah, and I would have to confer with Meredith, because I think it's such, the statement is thrown out there with no other explanation or substance given to it, so the impression, then, is that it works perfectly. Well, the reality is, nothing works perfectly. And unfortunately, when these comments are made, they're not, there's no public testimony to be given to substantiate another part of the argument. So, I just think it's something we need to be cautious of and maybe do our best to get more education out there to people that can carry on the conversation further.
I guess I'm a little confused, Jeff. Have there been other communities that you guys have looked at that are closer to our size and maybe more in the Midwest?
In regards to...
Just what other communities are doing, their...
For zoning ordinance?
Yes, for their zoning ordinances. The only reason I ask is because we do visit Fort Collins periodically because of having relatives there. And I see a lot of similarities between Fort Collins and Sioux Falls. And so, I'm just, I'm wondering if you guys have taken a look at that, at their ordinances?
Quick and easy, yes. I mean, every time we go to update a section of our code, we always go out and check comparable cities. So, right now, you know, we're doing temporary boulevard signs, we're doing banners. When we did the landscaping, we would go out there and look at Midwestern-like-sized communities. I mean, we don't just go to Minneapolis because it's a different-sized community. So, you try to find those like-sized, comparable Midwestern cities and get sections at a time. We haven't done, okay, Sioux Falls is going to completely redo, what other communities have completely redone their codes yet? That's what we haven't got to the stage of. And then there's other sections of the code that we haven't addressed yet, which are listed here. I mean, I've looked at signage, I've looked at landscaping, obviously, we recently looked at campgrounds, and so, we've looked at all those. So, when there's hot-ticket items, yeah, we go and look at everybody's and try to address those issues. As Dave mentioned, as planners and as you guys in your industries, we're always looking at other communities, and you're hearing about stories of how they've updated certain sections and issues. A lot of communities either have zoning codes from 1980s, or they're in the middle of updating them right now, and they're going through the same struggle and challenge of, "Wow, the times have really changed, and we're ready to take this huge visioning step." And as Jesse mentioned, they all go, "But we're not like Sioux Falls. I mean, Fargo can't do Sioux Falls, and we can't do Rapid City." And they go, "Why would we write our zoning code to be like Rapid City? We're not Rapid City." So, you kind of have to go, "We can look at it, but we can't write it the same as that community." And so, then you have to kind of step back and go, "Well, we can kind of consider it, but we have to write it the way our community likes it and what we want."
Oh, definitely.
I know, so that's the struggle you get, too. Is, you know, you look at them all, and you can compare them all, and that's the biggest challenge we're having right now, is we're getting to, "We've got to do a major rewrite, boy, now what are we going to do?"
Yeah, and I certainly understand that. It's just that I think sometimes comparing with other cities our size, maybe there are certain parts of it that we can take and that fit our community, and there are going to be lots of areas that don't. Okay, any other discussion or questions, Jeff? This is really an ambitious project, Jeff, and I really commend you for the huge leap you've taken.
Yeah, it'll be interesting, and you won't get off so easy. You get to step down as a planning commissioner, and you can become chair of the zoning update.
Oh, dear. That might be kind of fun, though.
Thank you, I appreciate it, and I'm glad I was able to give you an opportunity to look into it. So, let me know if you have more questions.
Thank you for your, for your hard work. Okay, the only other thing we have left on the agenda is to adjourn.
So, move.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Meeting adjourned.